A couple proclamations to read. One is about child abuse prevention. I'll start with that. Whereas child abuse is an issue that affects all members of our community and finding solutions depends on involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas child abuse prevention works when partnerships created between parents, practitioners, schools, faith communities, healthcare organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas family-serving, youth-focused prevention programs offer positive alternatives for young people and encourage parents and youth to develop strong ties to their communities. Whereas all citizens need to be more aware of child abuse and neglect and its prevention within the community and be involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing society. Now therefore, I, Mark Peterson, City of Winona Mayor, hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Winona and call upon all citizens, community groups, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation and efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect thereby strengthening the community in which we live. And I don't think there's anybody here to accept it. Is anybody here to accept this tonight? No? Okay. And then I have another one here. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas AmeriCorps members and senior corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation from educating students for jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, including 20 service locations here in Winona, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our city's economic and social well-being. And whereas more than 225 AmeriCorps members and senior corps volunteers serve in Winona, providing vital support to city residents and improving the quality of life in our city. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas AmeriCorps members and senior corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Peterson, Mayor of Winona, do hereby proclaim April 1, 2014, as National Service Recognition Day in the City of Winona. And I also have the pleasure of presenting a certificate here in a minute to Don Dennis for 42 years of service. Don was the City of Winona. Don began employment with the city on December 1, 1971 as graphics coordinator. He retired on April 4, 2014 after 42 years of service. Throughout this time at the city, Don used wonderful creativity to make the ordinary visually distinctive. When Don first started, there were no computers and no GIS system. His main job was to draw maps of the city. This included street maps, underground utility lines, flood zones, and building code zones. He created and printed forms for office use and typewriters and generated exhibits for city staff, council, and grant writing. As time went on and technology was introduced, his focus turned to jobs related to signage. Don's work is hanging throughout City Hall and the community. His work will continue to be enjoyed for many years to come. He created the display of the history of the City Hall building that hangs in the Heritage Room on the second floor. When City Hall was expanded in 2006, he redid all of the directional and room signage you see today. He was responsible for the detailed work done to affix the city logo on city vehicles, and he created many signs that you see throughout the city parks. One of his most recent works was the sign that hangs below the boat at Huff Street and Highway 61. In September 2009, Don's graphics coordinator position was eliminated due to budget constraints, and he moved to the police department in the role of parking control officer. This was a major transition for him, and to his credit, he immersed himself in the role and learned all he could. Don has met many interesting personalities over the last several years. He commented several times that he could write an entertaining book about his work, and maybe he will in retirement. The biggest benefit from the position change was the miles and miles of walking he did each day on the job. He was dedicated to his work and made his rounds in sun, rain, and snow, blazing heat, and sub-zero temperatures. Don says he has no immediate plans for retirement but does plan to spend time with his children and grandchildren. He also looks forward to riding his motorcycle and enjoying each day with his wife Linda. Don, the City of Winona is grateful to you for your 42 years of service, to the citizens of Winona, and we wish you the best in your retirement. And I wish you'd come up and I'll present you with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, too. All right. Well, thank you for all your service.
I appreciate it.
Just one final thing. In light of this accident that was out at Orange Street just recently, I've asked city staff and myself to get together with MINDOT to have a meeting and talk about if there's any way that we can do anything out there to expedite that project. It's a dangerous intersection, and I don't know if it's feasible or not, but we're going to see if there's something that we can't do. And that's all I have. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple different things this evening. First of all, I thought I'd bring the council up to date. We've ended our ability for the residents to ask for a reduction in their utility service. We have 960 requests. Out of that, 210 were frozen water services, and 750, I'm sorry, were requests due to running water to prevent frozen services. In addition to those requests, we've had some significant overtime activity in both the water and the sewer department related to helping to identify those frozen services. One of the things that we'd like to do at the city is to kind of correct a statement that our county assessor talked about at the pre-council meeting before council last week, or two weeks ago, I'm sorry. Mr. Hacken stated that the property, the value that we would be losing for the Highway 43 bridge project was in the range of $20 to $30 million. And we've gone to his office and worked on a spreadsheet, and the estimated market value of all the property to be taken by MINDOT for the bridge project over the next year is $5,329,000. So it's not as large. It will impact local taxing units by $136,000 in local property taxes. Now that includes taxes that go to the state of Minnesota, too, will be lost by all the taxing units. Of that $5.3 million in property values, about $4 million of that is the commercial properties that will be taken for the project. The last thing I'd like to do is, we received a report last week on the Masonic Temple and the rigging for the drops in the theater, and we'd like to bring the council up to date on this situation. And it was an emergency. We've issued orders not to use the stage at this point, and we'd like to bring you up to date. So I'd like to call Chad to give a summary of the report and the situation at the Masonic Temple.
Mayor and council, I wish I had better news. Unfortunately, in this case, that is not true. Again, as Judy alluded to, I'm here to talk about the historic theatrical drop to the Masonic Temple. Back in November of 2013, we started to experience issues with the drops, most notably line set two broke or snapped at the arbor. So during the event, line set two was down. We tried to raise that drop, snapped, and it became unusable. Since that time, we've had the drops inspected informally and now formally. They were inspected last month by a certified theatrical rigger from LVH Entertainment. And the report that I handed out to you tonight details the condition and disrepair of the drops, insofar that the report recommends the following. And the recommendation's a little bit lengthy, but I think it's important that I read it for the public. So the recommendation from LVH Entertainment says this. "Of the time of the inspection, it's in the inspector's professional opinion that any person on the stage of the Masonic Lodge is in danger of being seriously injured, and the injury could be fatal. The likelihood of injury is greatly increased when the drops are being operated. At the very minimum of complete cessation of the system operation is required, and it's highly advisable to restrict stage occupancy only to those who are absolutely necessary and are made aware of the hazards overhead. Nowhere in this report is a suggestion to repair any of the existing equipment. Repairing or updating one component still requires the entire system to depend on the remaining antique and obsolete components. A correct solution would be to replace the entire system forthwith. Unfortunately, replacing all the rigging components without replacing at least some of the building structure would be impossible, as new head blocks would require a flat and true head beam to support them. If the head beam is being replaced, it makes little sense not to replace the loft beams at the same time. Fortunately, the rigging system is not inseparable from the scenic drops it supports. The value of the art being held in the loft greatly outweighs any remaining value that could be assigned to the components that hold it there. Due to the three-inch center spacing between line sets, the new equipment would need to be custom-designed, as most modern line set spacing is typically spaced six to eight inches between line set centers. However, whereas modern rigging systems have to be engineered for unknown and asymmetric point loads being placed on the batten, the loads at the Masonic are fixed and relatively lightweight. This allows custom equipment to be designed to lift a known load. The drops could be removed to the house seating area. Being hung by their battens on a temporary support structure, this is the closest location that avoids having to manipulate package or reorientate the fabric and netting of the drops, as the house seating area has the height and depth necessary to accomplish this. Once the drops were removed, the presidium could be sealed off with plastic sheeting, and demolition and construction work on the stagehouse could commence. In conclusion, the counterweight rigging system in the Masonic is unacceptable for use and overhead lifting by current theatrical rigging standards, imposes imminent danger to persons on the stage. Due to the component degradation and failure, operation of the system should halt immediately." We have since closed the stage and the use of the drops to all parties effective last Thursday, and are in the process of notifying all future renters. In effect, we've ceased all operations of the drops and use of the stage. Due to the number of rentals in the space, for example, the upcoming Midwest Music Fest, we have a wedding, we have two weddings scheduled in the Masonic, as well as TDM productions, we think it's in the best interest to secure the drops so the stage can be used. So in other words, what I mean by that is, there is a process here, which I'll mention in a minute, that would allow users to use the stage if the drops were secured. Also, for some of our renters, if they use the house area and they're not using the stage, they can still rent the building because the other areas within the house and on the second floor are currently safe. So we will explore a process to, what's referred to as dead hang the drops. This will make the drops secure in their current location, however, the drops will not be able to be used again until the entire rigging system is fixed. We will make a decision on the dead hang process in the next 30 to 60 days. If you remember, the city received a $10,000 grant from the MHS to conduct a historic structures report. If you remember, we're completing the historic structures report to assess the structural integrity of the building. In order to restore the drops, we feel it's the best interest to secure the roof. In order to secure the roof, we need to know the structural integrity of the building. Again, you can see the circle that encompasses the Masonic Temple and its needs. RFQs are currently in hand for that historic structures report. We hope to bring back a recommendation at the next council meeting. Again, the historic structures report is intended to give the city a priority list of needed repairs and associated costs. The drops are not directly involved in that study, but obviously the stage and associated spaces are. We hope the HSR will be a tool in making decisions about the future restoration of the building and the drops. I'll let that sink in for a minute, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Do you have any estimate of the cost of securing the drops? Or did you say?
We've received a quote to dead hang the drops. The estimate was $20,000.
Chad, is this from the same company, LVH?
Yeah, the quote came from LVH, correct.
They're the same company that does that? I noticed they're from California, just looking them up, you know, after I read the report. Anybody else that does that in this area instead of California?
Well, they are a local company. They may be based in California. They were recommended to us by Thurn, or the division of Thurn that does theatrical rigging. I believe they're out of La Crosse.
Oh, I just, you know, went on their website just now while you were talking, and it seems like they were in California, so, okay. Thank you.
Your questions? Well, I would hope that we can secure these drops so that we can continue to use the stage. It sounds like there's a lot of scheduled events, and we certainly would like to accommodate those people if we can. Thank you.
Mayor Peterson. Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the petitions request and communications, item 3.1 is a request for temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for the Polish Cultural Institute to be used on May 3.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George. I think I heard Paul seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 3.2 is a request for temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for St. Mary's University Homecoming on June 21.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle. Second by George. Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 3.3 is the U.S. Title Series Boat Races for June 26 through 29. We do have a draft license agreement that the USTS has agreed to sign. And Pete is here, if you have questions. And Mayor Johnson's here also. I move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle. Second by George. Questions? I guess I have one, but maybe it's kind of obvious, but why are you separating from Steamboat Days this year after having done it for several years?
Steamboat Days is doing another activity, and we think that enough of the citizens of Winona still enjoy our program, as probably we enjoy Winona, the water and the park and so forth.
Okay. Al?
Yeah, and you're comfortable with the end of the event so that it doesn't interfere with other events in the park?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. What is it, a music program that begins at 8:00? And the letter and the proposed agreement indicate that we would be out of the park by 6:00.
Okay. Good.
Mayor?
Mayor and council, I've talked to Beethoven Festival. That's the group, that's why I said it has to be out of there by that particular time. They are going to be setting up that Saturday, and that won't infringe on what's there, but we'll make sure that they don't have to do anything as far as setup that hinders this area, and they'll make sure that they're out of there. They can do all their setup, and the concert is 8:00 that night, so they'll be out of there.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3.4 is the Winona National Bank Summer Concert Request for August 7 at the Lake Park Band Show. Move to approve the request.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Second by Pam. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 3.5 is a request by paperbacks and pieces for street closure on Friday, April 25th and Saturday, April 26.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George. Second by Michelle. Discussion.
Just a comment, I assume fire police know that the street will be closed during those hours.
Yes.
Pretty standard.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 3.6, the Blue Ribbons for Child Abuse, is being withdrawn by the Miller Mentoring Program. Moving on to item 3.7, request by MCs to use a portion of parking lot number 12 on April 26.
Is there anybody here from MCs? I mean, I just want to say upfront here that I have some concerns, and I guess if the council approves this, I hope they have to hire some extra security to have available. That's all I would say about it. Is there a motion?
Well, I have a number of concerns also.
Is there a motion first, though?
It's kind of moot if nobody's here and nobody's making a motion.
All right. I guess we'll move on.
Item 3.8 is the Team Vogel versus Cancer Event Request for Saturday, June 21st and Sunday, June 22nd at Lake Park. Move to approve that request. Second that.
Motion by Michelle. Second by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.9 is a license agreement request from Thrivent Financial for an encroachment into the right-of-way on Broadway Street at 502 East Broadway, and this would be for a handicap accessible ramp. I move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle. Second by Paul. Discussion. Al?
And I assume the resolution includes the paving of the boulevard to allow that ramp to work better with the building, and that Thrivent will cover those costs, the paving, well, as well as ramp and the paving.
That's the case.
That's understood.
Okay.
I have a question about the project. There's nobody here to answer it, though. I just wonder why we're doing this in front of the building. There's a side street that looks like a ramp could, you know, occupy the side street and then ride up to the door if it's right in the front there without taking up the whole boulevard.
Well, the entrance, I'm sorry, the entrance is in the middle of the block, so I don't, they'd still have to have, take up the block to get the entrance in there. So only entrance is kind of in the center of the building there. I only know because I used to have an office in there.
Yeah, my assumption would be that because of the angle and the requirement, you have to be, so many percentage, you can't be too high or too low, and so you need that length to do it.
Then the area that's paved, that would then be used as part of the public sidewalk, which isn't where the ramp takes up. Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.10 is a license agreement request from Winona Feed, Seed, and More for an encroachment into the right-of-way on Grand Street at 471 West Third. I would move to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Pam. Second by Jerry. Discussion. Questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is the Winona Transit Garage Expansion Project. This contains two separate components, the building shell and the building interiors. And Bruce Paulson from StanTech is here to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers.
Do you have any questions? Yes.
I'd move to approve both resolutions.
Okay. Motion by Al.
To contract to the lowest successful bidder.
I'd second.
Seconded by Michelle.
And then my question of view would be, in the first part of the first resolution, there's a substantial difference between one bid and the low bid. Could you explain how that happened or why you're confident this bid will be a successful bid?
I'm not exactly sure why there was such a huge difference between the two bidders that submitted bids. I did contact Ron Schultz with Schultz Brothers to ask him to take a look at his bid and make sure he had everything covered. He did. He called me back and indicated he was confident that he's got everything included in his bid that's shown on the drawings.
Thank you.
George?
Is this garage going to be heated?
No.
Okay. Other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Thank you very much.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the environmental review requirements for the Winona HRE.
I would so move to motion to authorize the mayor to sign the appropriate certifications and checklist.
Second.
Motion by George. Second by Jerry. Discussion.
I should mention Linda Vedkis here, if you have questions also.
I kind of do have a question. I've noticed in the cover letter to the city, Linda, that you have the 2014 capital fund, replace hallways, community room, value of 2014, and then you have the same item in the 2015. Is there just that much work to do, or?
General, we will split between two years if we don't have sufficient funds to cover the project.
Okay. Good.
Other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.2 is a contract with the City of Winona Professionals Employees Association for 2014.
I would move to approve that agreement.
Second.
Motion by Al. Second by Michelle. Motion was by George. Oh, I'm sorry, George. I was finding my place here. Motion by George. Seconded by Michelle.
I know, we look so much alike. You look so much alike, it's hard to tell.
I'm not going to go there. Discussion. George?
Yes. This may have been brought up maybe many years ago, but is there a way that we could find some different acronyms than KAWP?
Isn't it KAWP?
Mayor and council, it's the association that named themselves, so I guess it would be.
Whoever's in charge of that association, you know, maybe, you know, it really doesn't make any difference, but, you know, people say, you know, KAWP, so I guess, you know, yeah, it's memorable, so we won't forget that, so, that's all.
Let's pronounce it differently. Anything else? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.3, Contract for Design Engineering, the Final Design for the Airport Runway 1230 Reconstruction. And Keith would like to introduce the engineer on this project.
Mayor and council, the airport project has in the past been divided up into three phases. Now we're looking at two phases, which is outstanding because of funding. Phase one is underway, except for a couple permits. Phase two is what we're talking about now for the design portion of that. And I'd like to have Michelle Beard from Meaton Hunt talk about the schedule of the project and anything else you want to talk to her about on the airport. Michelle?
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Good evening, mayor and council. Like Keith said, this contract is for the second phase and final phase. We're happy that the FAA announced that they're going to give us all the money this year, hopefully, fingers crossed, if it becomes available to them. year, hopefully, fingers crossed if it becomes available to them. We're in the design phase right now, that's what the contract's for. We need a bid date in June, and then all of our grant application has to be submitted to the FAA by the 1st of July in order to get approved and to get the funding for the contractor to hopefully start work in September-ish on the second phase. The biggest portion of the second phase will be done next summer, with all the construction finalized by the end, I would say like September-ish of 2015, and the runway opened and ready, brand new. So, any questions?
George? Would work continue throughout the winter?
No, they will shut down over the winter. So phase one, just to recap a little bit, phase one was bid last summer, awarded in the fall. Like Keith said, we're waiting on this core permit, the 404 core permit. They've had it for 10 months, and we haven't got the permit. I called the guy today. We were supposed to have it at the beginning of April. I talked to him at the beginning of March, and he said, you'll have your permit in four weeks. So today was exactly the month, so I called him, and he didn't call me back. So I'll keep Keith up to date on that permit. Any day now, that permit will come, the contractor's ready to start work. We're actually going to have a meeting with him, probably like the 21st of April, and he's ready to get going on the first phase, which will happen this summer. And then if all the funding goes as planned for the second phase, the second phase will start in the fall of this year and then shut down. We have a little chunk of it broken out for just enough construction to be completed in like September, October-ish, and then the construction will shut down, the airport will open back up throughout the winter, and then shut back down next spring and be closed, pretty much for June, July, June, July, and August of next summer for total reconstruction of the runway, and then opened up again in September.
Al?
Have there been any changes in any of the plans for this project? Other than permits and things?
No, no, not any big changes. We made some...
And they moved the runway, taxiway, a little bit, but?
Yep, we moved, we shifted the taxiway further away, because that was a separation requirement by the FAA, so we have to move the parallel taxiway 25 feet further away.
Right, and the blast pad is, as planned, and all that kind of stuff.
Yep, we're adding a blast pad on both ends of the runway now. Right now, they don't have one on either end, so we're adding that in.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Other questions? George?
So any planes coming here, they'd be landing in La Crosse or Rochester, or?
Probably, for those three months. I've heard George say La Crosse, I think. Yeah, the Crosswind runway will be open this summer while we're doing construction on phase one, and also in the fall when phase one and phase two are both going on. Next summer, actually, the whole airport will be shut down because we'll be redoing a piece of the Crosswind runway, and of course, the whole entire. So, yeah, there'll be, I think I have right now like 70 days where it'll be totally shut down, where the contractor can just come in and get all of his work done as fast as he can and get out. So hopefully, he works faster than what we're assuming, and it's shut down for less than 70 days.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We had a motion.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
One second.
Okay, motion by George, seconded by Al. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with George.
Okay, thank you. The turn sign on Mankato Avenue, right north of the railroad tracks, looks good. I hope everyone gets the message. If you haven't seen it, a big circle, you know, with a arrow going left in a circle, and it's very colorful and it's eye-catching, and hopefully, that that will work. So I think we're on the right track with that, and thanks for the quick response on that. And Judy, where are we at as far as, I know you, Mark, and I met, as far as any warning signals go to let people know that trains are blocking, the intersection are soon to be blocked? Because it's been bad all last week. At least four or five times, they've been stretched out, well past, almost down by Bellevue East and on the other side up to WK School, and as one guy told me, that went on four times one day. So I know we talked about some kind of a warning signal, and people know not to, you know, go that direction, so...
And we've talked about it, we've talked about it with the railroad, we've made little progress on that at this time.
So...
We'll look into that again.
Okay, good. And also, congratulations to Don Dennis on his retirement, and also congratulations to Steve Jasnok, who will be retiring this Thursday or Friday. So wish him well and thank him for all of his years of service in the park maintenance department. We lost two very, very good employees, and a lot of longevity, and they performed a good job for us. And also, just like to acknowledge the passing of longtime Fourth Ward resident Charlie Garrick. Charlie, who passed away last week, was well-known for being involved with bicycles. He had them on his boulevard, he rode them, he repaired them, and regardless of where you would go, in the east end, middle of town, wherever, you would find Charlie riding on his bike. And if he knew you, he would stop and engage in friendly conversation. So that part of our Fourth Ward history has now passed on, but he certainly will be missed. And to his wife, Mary Ann, to her daughter, Linda Williams, as we know her, a long time, she spent time in the Winona Police Department, her husband, Tom Williams, Deputy Chief, and to her other brothers, condolences on the passing of Charlie, and he will long be remembered. Thank you.
Pam?
Nothing tonight.
Paul?
Yeah.
Michelle?
I have two things. We had the downtown idea exchange at the History Center this weekend, and it was a pretty good turnout. Some great ideas came out of that, so on May 15th, they'll be making formal presentations to that committee of 15 people, so we can see where that grant money might be appropriated. And then I'm going to Japan next week, and I just want to say thank you to Jamie Shell and Bob Kuiper, who agreed to make the gift that I'm taking to Japan. And I don't have it tonight, they're not done, but I wanted people to know who had agreed to make something for me to take, and hopefully, I'll get a picture so you can have it here at City Hall. And that's all I have.
Jerry?
Nothing this evening.
No.
Pretty special day. My middle grandson, Preston, turns eight, so I want to wish him a happy birthday. And I want to wish safe journeys to Councilwoman Alexander, as well as the other ambassadors and their chaperones who will be traveling to our sister city of Masada. It'll be a wonderful experience for everybody. I know that as one who's experienced their hospitality. And want to wish everybody a happy April holidays. Palm Sunday is next Sunday. Passover starts Sunday, April 14th at sundown, and Easter Sunday is the 20th already, so I don't know if George is going to be the Easter Bunny again or not, but I'm sure...
It's a mystery.
Everyone will be celebrating in their own fashion, so that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there is one item, the approval of the minutes from March 17th.
Move to approve the consent.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.